At the top of the, what is this?
Kim.
Oh, okay.
That's the first item.
The first item, 123 Newton Street. Who's presenting for 123 Newton Street?
I'm in this.
All right, if we could give this, say, 20 to 25 minutes, you could present in 10 minutes or 15, and that would give us time for board comments and then comments from the audience.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Good evening, my name is Jim Risley. I'm the architect for Sarah and Fahad Gilani. They are the owners of the property at 123 Newton Street. And they intend to take down the existing house at 123 and replace it with a family home themselves. Their hope had been to build further back on the site where there's other upland, but because of the wetlands on the site, they were denied access to that upland area, so they chose to explore a building at the location of the existing house. So this is the neighboring, the comparison of the neighboring properties. The Gilani's have 2.82 acres. 2.62 acres, it's a little blurry on this slide. And so this compares their acreage. And then the proposed house, which has a residential gross floor area of 7,400 square feet, would be RGFA's land area of .6. And as you can see, the houses in the area, 126 has a ratio of .07, that has... I think that's .7 there. Or .06, I'm sorry. The Gilani's ratio would be .06. And that puts it in line with residences at .07, .06, .06 at 125 Newton, .05 at 122. Some smaller houses on smaller lots at .04, .05 at 60 Possum, and .07 at 50. And .02 at 105, but that's almost a 5-acre site. This is the existing house, or photos of the existing house. And the site slopes up to the northwest corner. This is along Newton Street. And there's sort of a knuckle or a mound here, and then it goes down into sort of a low area, and then the upland is beyond. This is coming down from 125 Newton Street, so you can see the grade coming down towards the house. And this is the elevation of the existing house facing 125 Newton. The house, the existing house and the proposed house will be in a building line on Newton Street. So that's probably one of the good things that came out of this is that rather than the house being set further back on the site, it remains in the building line of Newton Street. This is the existing walkout at the southern elevation, so this would be interior to the site. This image is looking back across 125 and up towards, I think it's 131 or beyond, where the area has been cleared of trees and the wetlands more shaped, probably many decades ago. And this image actually shows where their deck would be, and then the corner of their house would be here. And then this is existing corner of 125. And then this is a view at the southeast corner, so. The proposed house will have a similar orientation with a garage at the southeast corner, private yard space to the back, or to the interior of the site with a walkout. Front door also oriented towards Newton Street. So somewhat of a similar orientation. I think if, unless there's any other questions, we can look at the engineering.
Okay. So here we are with the existing house, single-family, on Newton Street. You can see on the north side. You have the zoning setbacks, so you can see a large portion of the existing houses in the setback with the front yard and the side yard. Subject system for the original house is in the rear. Lots bisected by a wetland. And then they have the up, what Jim had mentioned is an upland section over here. In the rear is the NWRA, the reservoir in the back. What they're proposing to do is, in this plan here, is the new house, take down the former house, new house, portion of the existing house will show on the plot plan, and a portion of it is still in setback. Here's the 25-foot notice there from the actual wetland area. Little wall on the backside, which the Conservation Commission allowed us to put within the actual 25-foot notice curve. The lawn is kind of very small compared to most properties in Western, but it's, there's a little section of lawn here through here. Recharge basin, driveway coming up through here, which we pushed the driveway down a little bit south of the fore of the existing and wanted to get a little more site distance with the speeds that are on Newton Street. We have, we do have a 14-foot wide driveway. I think Captain Robinson has signed off on it. The five bedrooms, subject system in the front. Because of the boardhouse setbacks to wetlands 100 feet for the subjects of the civilian corner, we can't actually put there unless we're putting in the back. We can't do that. So here's the plotway that I mentioned. So you can see, here's the former house. It's a little shaded area, that little area right there. So we are inside the setback a little bit, but we are further back from the sideline of the existing house. We look at the front and the side yard. We've shown a wall here, but actually Steve has actually adjusted this wall to save an additional tree that we noticed on the site. Let's keep saying the name of the tree.
Umbrella pine.
Yes, yeah. And so, yeah, so now that tree's saved. I took the tag and put it up adjacent to the actual subject system, so that's all, we saved that tree very easily. And basically, the wall I mentioned back here, it is a structure, but it's all conforming to setback. So it's over three feet tall, but it's, we're confined, compliant to setbacks along the subject.
So this is a site section cut through the front facade of the post house. This outline here is the outline of the existing house. As you can see, it has this tall wall here that is further in the setback. And we've held this edge of the house down by clipping the ceilings on this edge of the house down, so it's below that existing profile. We do, with the hip roof, the center hip roof, increase the ridge by six feet. However, this is just a pull-down attic space. There's no habitable space up there. And I felt that the 6'12 pitch was maybe as shallow as we'd want to go with the style of the house. This is the area of buffer that will be enhanced with landscaping on the number 125 Newton Street up here. This is a section through the elevation facing 125 Newton Street. And you can see the outline here of the existing house. And then the new house takes off, and then we step it back a few feet. So this portion of the house is even further from the property line. Both, I think, improved. And then this is that lawn area that Jim had pointed out, going back towards the wetlands.
Stu Cosmos, let's get architects. So this is the plan produced to kind of fit the house to the site. So we've got a lot of buffering along the frontage here. There are existing trees in there, so we're working in between them to provide evergreen screening. We've really beefed up the sideline here. This is the Japanese umbrella pine that we just spotted at the sidewalk that's being saved, so we had to pump this wall up a bit to capture that, and then just extended it down. So we'll have a raised planter all along this side right up to about here, where it dies, and there's a big existing tree here. And then we beefed up the whole side to really screen this property line. It's essentially the only butter that's visible. And then on this side, it was suggested by Kim that we add just a little bit of screening at the MWRA driveway. So we added three white pines on that side.
Site lighting, who's talking about that, site lighting?
I should. So the site lighting is, for the most part, attached to the building with the exception of a post at the driveway. A certain hammerhead turnaround here. Some wall lights on the steps leading up to the house. And then there would be a front door, ended, two recessed lights, two wall sconces at the side or family door. And then at the driveway, there would be two sconces between the three garage doors. A wall sconce at the service door of the garage. Some recessed lights on a patio under the deck. And then some small downlights to illuminate the deck. And the total luminance is 13,300. So it's... So this is the post light. All the lights are LED sources, where the source is hidden up in the shield here. And then the only visible, sort of sensible light besides the light itself is this seated glass lantern. It's the pendant light. They're all in the family of lights. Wall sconces. These are the small lights at the deck. So these would be sort of low, sort of low profile. And then these are the LED wall lights on the steps going to the front door. This is the calculation of the residential gross floor area. A three-car garage, which is 868 square feet. The first floor, no deductions in it. The second floor with a cutout over the family room and over the foyer. And our total is 7,396.
Part of the basement that applies to the garage.
I'm sorry?
The only part of the basement that you're counting is the garage?
Correct, yes, yes.
The rest of it's low-grade?
It is not a story, yes. That's right. Reset the FAR for the GIL. It's 7,396 square feet total. And looking at the house itself, this is the front elevation. These lines depict how the setback moves through the building. And this is, this is the setback. It's a little blurry. This is the setback at the rear of the house as it goes through, and then this is the setback at the front. And then this shows how we held it down well near in the setback line. Side elevation facing 125.
Are you in the front yard setback?
No, 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 we were able to move the house back. Rear elevation itself facing the interior of the site. And the garage elevation itself, it's all pretty solid.
Could you put back your view of this? So what is that on the basement?
This would be a bonus room.
And is it, you're tallying where it is?
No, it's not a story. The front of the garage in this elevation are the only ones that are exposed, so it's less than 50%.
Where's the setback line?
Oh, I didn't... I went back to the far side. So the setback line...
Yeah, no, I saw it on the front.
Yeah, I failed to take it to the back. It's skewed through the site, and so as you get to the back of the building, the back actually starts to swing outward from the setback.
You haven't been before CBA yet, have you or haven't you?
We haven't, yeah. At the beginning of the projects, I sat down with Michelle, Emi, and Noreen to kind of have the path of how to go. So they said, "Go con-con, plenty of board."
Okay. All right, so you've got to get, what, a finding?
It's going to be a variance.
It's got to be a variance. What's the hardship?
The wetlands, the size of the lot, the actual way that, how this zoning sets up on the property.
Where's the... What is the height of the top of the highest bridge above average grade?
It's 36.2 feet. It is because of the, you know, the walkout in the back?
Yeah.
So from the back, that's the...
Yeah, it looks like the front of the house, a couple of corners, actually are right on the setback.
Yes, yeah, we are.
Right on it.
We were trying, what we tried to do is we were trying to measure that 25-foot setback to, you know, not put too much into the wetland setback notice curve. And then try to keep it conforming as much as it can to the zoning, so we were trying to run that line down the middle.
Somebody has to be a really good surveyor to get that right.
Right.
This is the ground floor or the basement plan. Three-car garage over here, mechanical space entry, the covered patio. And then this area would be maybe used in the future as some entertainment space or hobbyish. First floor, the entrance, the main entrance, then the family entrance. Kitchen is here in the southeast corner. Studio over here in the southwest corner, and then in the northwest corner. The second floor with the cutouts two below, five bedrooms. And then this just shows the area of the attic that is at five feet and then seven feet, just to illustrate that it's not intended for habitable space.
Okay, thank you. We have a letter from, or an email from Kenny Turner. She can't be here this evening, but she had a couple of comments with respect to this application. She says, "The buffer planting that the applicant is proposing is about as solid as he can make it, but the house is quite large. He is interplanting existing trees with smaller arbor ivy in a mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs, but also adding in several larger evergreen trees. I have three concerns, which I relay to the landscape architect during the site walk. Number one, the roadway to the NWRA site adjacent to this property is fairly open, and I ask that some additional evergreen screen be added along that eastern property line." And you said you had done that.
Correct.
"Two, there is a specimen umbrella pine along the western property line that does not show up on the plan and should be saved. Retaining wall grading may need to be slightly realigned in order to make this happen," and that's happened.
Yep, right there.
"And number three, there are two large, large Dawn redwood that do not show up on the plan that are in the front yard and are within the bounds of the new driveway. If there are any adjustments to the house size or driveway configuration, every effort should be made to save these trees."
They're right about here, and so the grade doesn't allow for us to save them right now. So they are eliminated on this plan.
Would it be possible to think about it more and see if you might be able to adjust things to save them, or no?
I really don't think that we can, given the subject system up here, that we don't have a lot of flexibility to change these grades.
Dave, do you have any comments at all?
So the stone wall is fine. One thing I'd like to mention, I think Jim has told it a little bit, was the relocation of the driveway entrance really improves the site distance coming out of the driveway. Not like a little, but like, and it doesn't, it's funny, you have to really go up there and see it because you can't really tell on the plan because it looks like it's a straight shot, but it goes from like, they're on you quick, to very, very more comfortable. Like, I count it as like 13 seconds or something like that, so. It is like a hole in a corner, so it, just if things start to get shifted around, that's a move. I'm not usually the site, you know, changing the driveway entrance guy, but that one, that one makes a difference.
Okay. Is there a stone wall associated with that?
No.
Property line, no?
Right, no, there isn't. There's actually, the only stone walls on the property are here and the actual one on the side, which we're standing. So we're not touching any of the stone walls.
Well, there are new retaining walls though. Any new retaining walls?
Yes, yep, there's the retaining wall that I mentioned in the back.
Yeah, right.
And then there's some walls for the stairs here, and then there's a wall that kind of ties into the house right there.
And also retaining wall in the back.
The wall in the back in Barris goes from, oh yeah, sorry, then the wall that Steve has through there, and then there's a small wall that comes off this section here. So what happens is, at the sidewalk, we had shown that there's almost like a very, there's a very super steep slope on the side, and we were just spreading the grades out, and so we had to, we pushed the wall out. So this wall is only a couple of feet tall here. This wall starts about three feet, and as it comes through this section here, it ends up about almost eight feet tall on that side. It's going through the lower section of that area, so to keep up with the grades. And then also, it's also going to have a small fence or something on the top of it because we don't want anybody going over the top of it.
And on the right side of the property, seven feet?
Yeah, so this is only a couple of feet tall to exist in the setback, so it has to be...
It doesn't exist already?
It does not, no, no. That's the new one that Steve had done to save those really large existing trees. And then we, like, suddenly have a small knee walls for the stairs, then we have a small wall that ties in to the house right there.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, I'm interested, you have raised planters. Where are they exactly, the plants that you're trying to...
Just along the right side here. Right there. Just along the side.
Uh-huh. But are they, do they also, is it just one side that it's raised planters? Or are they whole raised planters, both sides?
No, it's just one side. The grade wraps off, and we're just trying to save these trees.
My comment is, this is a built lot, but the bulk of it is really unrentable, and you seem to want to put a very large house here, and you have to get a variance, a hardship. And I'm trying to see the hardship.
Well, you don't have to sell it to the CBA.
Yes. I think that you could definitely sell this to the CBA if you hold it in a little bit, maybe reduced it all over a little bit, allowing maybe to drop that ridge height.
And that's the same comment I made at the site walk. I'm concerned about the size of the house. It's, for the most part, it's more than twice as large as all of the existing houses with the exception of that 9,000-square-foot house.
And...
Right, it does.
This one requires so much manipulation to be able to work.
And that, yeah, I'm very concerned that the zoning board is not going to see any hardship because it is such a large house, a lot to do the others. I do appreciate, however, that unlike most new houses, you have reduced the footprint by putting the garage in the basement, which also takes advantage of the slope of the land. So I think that was a very good move. Kind of had no choice, but, yeah, so that's really my only comment is the size of the house.
Is the CBA looking for something from us?
They'll be looking for your decision, yeah.
Our decision.
Yeah, and we would comment in that, yeah, they, we'll have our decision before they, before they hear it.
Which means they might be coming back to us again.
Yeah, then they would have to come back with a amendment.
Dave, regarding the visual impact from the house on the right.
Yeah.
So it's a bigger house, it's a bigger house. It's pulled back a little bit. You're adding buffering. Can you just talk about what you feel like the visual impact is going to be from that area?
Yeah, I think Jim says, well, his cross-section, pull that up. But again, I think...
With all things considered, I think.
And I think the op-plant helps a little bit to give me an idea because on the cross-section, you don't see it as much. They can see how much they're pulling it back. Where the existing house... The existing house is 21 and a half, 21.9 feet. Those two closest corners.
Right.
And we're going to end up being...
Pulled back.
Yeah, well, this one's 29, and that one's 31. So you're pulling back pretty significantly. And the house is taller, but it is pretty far back, so.
What's the mass that they say? Didn't I see a slide here that kind of showed the mass that they see?
Yep.
Let's go back to that for a second. That's it. And that's the old house, and that's the new house.
So the front, the smaller one is anywhere from 10 feet closer to 15 feet closer than the new house.
And that takes into account that new house is further away, that picture does.
To a point, I mean, not really, because it's going to, that's just basic cross-section in that area.
Yeah, right.
I think, Jim, if you go to the one where you showed them the front view, so you can see there on the left one, and you can see how far, much farther. So the section of us that we're in the setback, you can see we're actually lower than the existing house for the section of the house that's in the setback.
And can you go back to the other slide just for a second? And then what are we doing to hide the right mass that's being added, more trees?
Yeah, we've added, so you can put Steve's up. So that's all those new plantings right through that area.
What size are those?
Kim asked if they'd increase in size.
Um, I think, can you see it right there?
They should be, we've categorized them to 12.
I'm sorry, what was the answer?
10 to 12 foot, right.
It's really a struggle to make it work on the site, I gotta say.
Plus, as those trees grow, it's going to become very closed and, I think, closer open for you in the house. Well, it has to be so densely planted in order to try to provide any mitigation at all. It's going to be, it just will be tight. It just will be tight.
Well, I think we have a pic, a picture. We'll have to deliberate on what your conditions are and what, yeah, what we can communicate from the CBA.
Do we have a public comment?
Yes, I was just about to get to that.
Thank you.
Uh, in fact, why don't we go ahead with that? Could you give your name and address, or?
Sure, I'm Mr. One Twenty-Five and Street, Gordon Whitman. Can we go back to the massing slide, please? Actually, it was the original neighborhood context one, please. Thank you, uh, there we go, good. First of all, I want to make a point, the only house that has the big size is, is end onto the street. It shows a small gable end, and that is it. This house takes the entire seventy-five hundred square feet and faces it on the street. It is a much, it's a, it's a major alteration in the context of the place here. I'm a little confused here, my house, at the site, at the site tour, I was at, I had a twenty-seven hundred square foot house, and now I'm up to forty-one hundred, so, thanks for the extra room, I don't know where it is, but.
Well, that includes the garage and the other floors of the garage that are on public rent.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know.
Uh, and, and all of these are calculated the same way, so it wasn't, not tipping the scale.
I think, I think the general issue from, from a neighborhood standpoint, and my, in this particular neighbor, is that I don't want to look at it, it's a major change in the context of this scenic road, if you will, and I don't, I don't think it works. It's crammed in, and frankly, this application has been a series of pushing absolute maximum that can go into this. I was there in front of the conservation board, they want to put ramps to the wetlands to the back. It's been one issue after another of trying to just go for the biggest, hugest, most maxed out place that they can get. And the history is, it's a small farmer's cottage, and I'm not saying they have to build that, but there's no one eight right, the five bedrooms and the three car garage in this neighborhood. And I would hope the planning board would resist this imposition of size on this lot that doesn't fit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there other public comments at all? Our issue is that we can't regulate the size of a house. All we can try to do is mitigate the impacts as much as possible. But in this instance, where there's actually a setback encroachment that requires a variance, you know, what I'm thinking about myself is what to say to the zoning board appeals about the planning board's position relative to the setback encroachment. Granted, the setback encroachment is, is less than before, but the impact of the building is greater than before, so. I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm really wrestling with that one. I, I, you know, I, I don't, I understand about not willing to overplant, screen planting because it tends to keep, the, the, it tends to become crowded, and the plants start to fill each other off. On the other hand, eight to ten foot plantings.
Ten to twelve.
All right, ten to twelve.
That is naturally, that's too small.
Well, is it, is it a sufficient screen, you know, to, uh?
Big, it's a tall house.
Yeah, for such a, to mitigate the impact from the two houses that are actually fairly close together. I don't know, there's a, what about this that bothers you?
It doesn't.
Well, it just.
It's very.
Worries me.
And part of the space that you're gonna use it for a building could actually, if the zoning board doesn't give you that variance, could be used to have a oyster, but the plantings, to mitigate even more. So that's sort of your choice, is pull in a little bit, don't have to go for a variance, and, but then we are going to require very additional planting. It will leave you with very little space around that house.
And you can't go left because it's conservation?
Yeah.
There, there's practically, there's so little, I mean, what's the percentage of the lot that's actually built?
Um, not much, if you, uh, because right now, we would need a crossing to get to the back. So if you exclude that section, I mean, you're talking about.
And you can't do that, so that actually is a problem, that no one can overcome that problem because that's the way it is. So you've really got a very tiny building pad here. It probably is going to have a, make, an uncomfortable.
I'm just looking at the size of the footprint relative to the other house, the other footprints in that neighborhood. It's, 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 it's by far and away the, the biggest house in that neighborhood on this, on, one of the smallest parcels of building of the land. It's, it's gonna have a huge impact.
Yeah, the percentage coverage of the size is misleading, point oh six, point oh seven.
Because it's not built in.
It's really, in this case, you have to look at the actual square footage. Is there some, is there any way that we can somehow defer to the zoning board and let them make their decision?
I think that's why they defer to us.
They kind of want to hear this.
I think they kind of want to hear, they want to hear.
If we can't say, if we can't say that the house has to be smaller, pushed back to the setback line, then.
Well, we can, actually, we can say that, and then they would have to go get the variance from zoning.
But now saying that we can't ask for the house.
No, no, but you, we could, we could say that we consider the impacts to be great enough so that we wouldn't recommend granting a variance for the setback approach.
And that would be in our certificate of action order, or is that just carrying out order?
Well.
That's the get dicey business.
I, yeah, that's, I want to think about that some more because.
That might take counsel.
Yeah, I, I, we, we've never actually seen one like this before, actually, you know. I've been on the planning board twenty-one years, I've never seen one quite like this.
What?
There's always.
Or that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why you would have to say, yes, we'll just automatically accept this because we are limited only in terms of our setbacks. We can't review the house as long as it misses our setbacks. This one is not meeting it in one area, so. And then it would have to go to the planning board.
I feel like we've seen houses that are, have encroached in a setback for.
But maybe there's a lot, I mean, this, this is just, this is just different, he said. It's such a tiny building.
No, I know, but I kind of remember having this, this issue before, like, we felt like zoning board should come before us for that reason. And I can't remember the project.
I, I don't think it's gonna be that easy. That would be, that would be the easy thing, Steve. Uh, but I think we need to.
What group was it you met with that said, it's in this order? Who told them that?
I met with Emi, Michelle, and Noreen.
And that's just the order that you know?
Basically, yeah, that's the order we've usually done it in.
Oh, I see, you didn't get counsel on it.
No, no.
I don't, I, I don't see, why would we want to push it off to the CBA and have them make points of planning decisions?
Someone's gonna see it twice, is kind of what.
Yeah.
You know, so she goes, you, ZBA, then you, or it's gonna go ZBA, you, then back to ZBA.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm willing to say, to the zoning setbacks.
Right.
Even that would give you a huge impact.
Here's what I would suggest, that instead of writing a decision on this right now, we, we ask Emi to do an analysis based on the, on our standards and criteria.
Okay.
And write a recommendation as to what our communication to the zoning board of appeals should be.
That's good.
And?
And then run that by town council.
Okay.
And then we'll continue this hearing and look at that, perhaps, report, and.
Next meeting, which is twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
And there, we're looking at, you will believe, we'll be looking at this in terms of manipulation of plant forms.
Yeah.
Impact to butters, all the things.
All the things we normally look at, yeah.
Criteria.
So, yeah, we're basically kind of running up the criteria table.
Right.
Have that due, and their conclusion will be not so much conditions, but recommendations to the CBA.
So, yeah, so that helps you all architects to.
Yeah. I think that's the best we can do on this right now.
So does that, are you saying that we actually don't make a decision, you just make a recommendation?
I do. Yeah, at this point, because so much hinges on the CBA's decision, that, that trying to mitigate the impacts, it's almost like, is, is this the part of the horse?
Right.
And so I think if we package it as, as a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, then they either decide to grant the variance or not, and then we can determine whether we can, how we mitigate the impacts going from there.
But what if the CBA wants a decision for?
That's my concern.
They're gonna say, recommendation's not good enough.
Okay, well, then we'll, we'll, we'll have to make a, a decision.
But I like the idea of making a recommendation first.
Yes, right. And then if they come back and they say, no, we need a decision with that recommendation, then we do that.
We'll have to do that, yeah. I mean, it's really squeezing the envelope. Okay, so that's what we'll do, we'll, we'll pick this up again on the twenty-third of May.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have the. We have the, Dan, overnight camp for Bain Basketball, Regis College. Who's gonna give the presentation to that?
That's me.
All right, please come up and tell us what you plan to do.
Okay, my name's Grant Elliott, I'm with Bain Basketball Camp. This is our twenty-fourth summer, running camps around Boston area. We are hoping to do a two night, three, or really, it's really only about two days, about a half day, full day, and a half day, girls' camp at Regis College this summer. Checking in the afternoon of Friday, June twenty-second, and checking out Sunday at eleven AM on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. How many?
Well, the gym size is limited, so we actually already have, I think our maximum signed up. We're gonna do forty, maybe forty-two, but we don't want to take anymore.
And they're gonna stay overnight at the, at the facility?
Yeah, two nights overnight, so all girls, and our staff will be all girls, and our, our trainer will be a female as well.
How many staff?
Uh, if you count the director and our trainer, we should have seven.
How does this fit in our camp chart?
The camp chart?
It's kind of the camp chart.
I love the camp chart, it's so good.
Here is the camp chart, so we are looking at what weeks again now?
June twenty-second.
It's June twenty-second. There are a lot of camps.
So it starts at Friday.
Is that June?
This is June, where do I have them now? Just a little bit here.
Something there?
It's the twenty-second.
So it's fifty.
Whoa, where are we at?
He said twenty-second to twenty-fourth.
I've been with them all along.
It's just two months.
Yeah.
July?
I've been down to July, oh, that's why. So, yeah, they'd actually be here over the weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's much better.
So we're gonna have twenty-second to the twenty-fourth, okay?
Yeah, so just Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Yeah.
Yeah.
The camp sheet is letting us down, you know.
I know, this is my.
The all-powerful camp sheet.
My sheet has failed today.
Well, let's, let's just do it literally. Um, right now, there are twenty-second, there are four hundred and eighty-one campers. If you add fifty, that brings it up to a little over five hundred, five hundred and thirty. And then the twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third and thirty-fourth, all you have is the high school journal and the county record, they're like fifteen.
Right, so this, zero impact there.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a weekend, so.
Yeah, so.
Correctly got.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like a, to use a metaphor, a slam dunk.
Very good, Alan.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
How old?
Uh, primarily, they're like nine to twelve, so it's kind of a nice.
So they won't be dunking?
They won't be dunking, well, at least, well, not yet, and we'll see. But because it's a two night overnight, it's kind of a nice starter, sleepaway camp for some younger kids, maybe first time kids.
All around Massachusetts?
They are, but they're pretty local, yeah.
We have one other place.
Should be fun.
All right, so what period of time, is this the first application for this camp?
For this camp, yes, so we usually do three years for the first.
You expect to grow at all, or are you gonna sort of stay the same size?
If we stay at Regis, I'm not sure how we grow, because it's, it must be figured out at different gyms if we.
Yeah, okay.
Or we do outdoor, outdoor courts.
Right, gotcha, okay. So three years for about that level of, of campers. Okay, good. So we'll take a look at this again on the, what, the twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
We'll review the decision.
Yep.
I don't hear any objections to, from the board.
Okay.
I don't know if there are any public comments about basketball camp, no. Right, in that case, good, we'll, we'll vote on the decision on the twenty-third of May. Be all set.
Can I do it back on the twenty-third?
You don't have to, we're not taking testimonials. We just got a decision and vote on it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Our next next is the Longfellow Tennis Camp. Or Hallow, but it's Longfellow.
Or Hamel, it's Longfellow Tennis Club, Hamel Tennis Camp.
Alright.
Hello. Hey, how are you? Nice to see you guys all again. We're looking to expand our camp over to River School. It's basically based on the fact that our tournament camp is growing, and we're doing the tournament camp at Regis with an overflow at Weston High School. One of the reasons why we're going to Rivers is, is one, it's an expansion, and then two, is the Weston High School courts are gonna be out of play for a while this summer, because they're getting resurfaced. So it's a dual purpose. And I'm the boys tennis coach there as well, but it has to do with summer camp. So, um, you know, we'll have about 30 kids that, that will be, would be the maximum that we would have there. Typically, it's gonna be 16 to 24 per, per week. The impact on traffic is, is our high school camp, they do check in at Longfellow and Wayland, and we shuttle them to Rivers. So there's not gonna be an impact that much on traffic, because the high school kids come from all over, and they check in at Wayland, it's just easier for us to manage them there. And, um, yeah, that's, that's basically it.
Right, and you were, you were, your first application was what, three years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
So they've got 2016, is there a permit?
So you're looking for five years this year?
Yes.
Yes, this one is, this one is in the right place. But it, this one's over a long period of time, they basically run the whole summer.
Yeah, we run all the summer, I mean, truth be told, the school getting out late, you know, we will probably get probably the week of June, 25th, and we'll go to mid-August. And like I said, our big concern is, is that I know in that time, Parks and Rec cannot let us know the date that the courts at the high school are gonna be resurfaced, that they will be out in the fun weather, you know, two to three weeks.
So, so you're gonna use Rivers this time, right, are you gonna regularly use Rivers once Weston High?
Well, the, the, where camp grows right now, the projection is that they're gonna, they're gonna grow enough.
That you'll use all these sites?
Right, use all these sites. Now, the Rivers School Camp, to my knowledge, is not running this summer. That's when they came to us and they said we could use their courts, because we ran their tennis program at their camp, which kept us from, um, using the courts all the time, because I needed them there, you know, whatever, so we actually ran their Rivers Day Camp stuff, and they're no longer gonna be running their Day Camp.
So, I, I just, the only little thing is that you would like to find, would be understanding that we will provide on a yearly basis any changes in our contract, so that you would feel that you need to come back if you have any major change.
Right. But at some points, Rivers, I know they're going under, they're doing some construction over there.
Yeah, that probably is why.
And, and so for. Right, so with that, where the courts are okay, they're okayed on that pot of Wayland, so I don't think the master planning isn't to move the courts at all, to my knowledge, you know, but at the same point in time, is I know that they're doing a lot of construction, they have a new campus plan that they're working on.
Yes.
And so, if I say five years, they can come and say, we're gonna move the courts here, because they've done that in some of the fields, but, you know, they're willing to have us come and use it.
The big thing is that there's very little traffic.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, that's kind of nice.
Yeah, we, we try to shuttle, shuttle it, because it's easier for the parents as well. Because I, I know that there's never any, I know there's never any traffic on Route 20 and 30 when I drive on it in the mornings, heading down.
Right.
So, if we can, you know, by the time they drop off, they don't have to go down there, and then Regis is nice, they can hop right off 95 and go, and, and go back, so. But we try to shuttle what we can, makes it convenient for parents, although we only have one, you know, van on the road, and then we get multiple things.
Alright. Okay, so.
The Camp None Such is still going, but the Rivers Day Camp is not going.
Oh, okay.
But are they, is None Such run after this campus?
It is run up, if you go up on Route 30, and you go right where it goes into like Main, right there at Mainstone. You take a right right there, and Camp None Such, I think, is, is up there.
Yeah, I thought that way.
Oh, so they want it on.
But it's all on that None Such.
But, but, yeah, but maybe.
Oh, yeah.
The English may be native.
Yeah, and it is native.
I don't have anything to do with those camps, I just know, because I always see them, it means, they ask me how my camp is, I say, how their camp is.
It's friendly when you camp people.
Right, right.
Okay, so, we okay with this?
Yes.
Good, Steve, yeah. Alright, so we will give you a five-year extension.
Great, thank you.
Uh, and take a look at the decision again on the 20, 23rd, can't mind?
Okay, great.
Uh, and that's it.
Okay, great, alright, well, we appreciate it, we'd like, you know, do this here, you know, keep the, keep the, keep the, I'll do that.
Alright, thanks very much.
How did he ace the presentation?
Oh, totally just wait.
Half an hour. He wrote it down.
Really couldn't help himself.
All these puns.
Okay, 45 Willard, following our site visit, we're gonna ask them. They're gonna continue, uh, they sent in the request to continue, um, to the meeting on June 6th.
June 6th, okay.
Right, Dave, so you're.
I'm, you're out of here.
Um. Uh, the tree, I, the tree height's on the other one, maybe just run that by Ken again, that's just a question.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think she sets up God of the, a little walk inside, so.
I do remember she told them to bump it up to 10 to 12, they were short of it.
I still remember, I'm like, I, I don't know, they were at 10 to 12, but they each wanted to bump up to.
Oh, 12 to 14?
Or it was eight to 10, which to me, like, I, I never, it was Christmas tree. Right, exactly. Roy didn't, he used to come and propose to me to 10, you know, like.
Alright, okay, yeah. 56 Westland?
Yeah, so 56 Westland, if you let me tee it up a little bit, what this is, is, um.
Tee it up, now we're doing golf things. This is rough.
I know. At some, at some point, we will talk about football.
We're gonna get blitzed with them, okay?
How many bad puns can we do in one night, it's awesome. So.
You can see the finish line from here.
We're all on the track.
That was a marathon one.
I want this all in the minutes, all of it. So, 56 Westland, they actually did receive a prior approval from you. They did not build for a while, over two years, which is normally considered a lapse. They also didn't record their decision, so we are looking at this, at this again, basically, you've seen the application before, but we have to hear it again, because it's, because it's basically lapsed without an action on it, so. Liz Darling is here, the owner's here present to talk about it. Remote's over there, if you wanna go through your, using the individuals.
Sorry. So, as Lee might said, we've been through this before, just, um, for budgetary reasons, we're, didn't end up finishing the attic, only were able to afford the staircase up, so we're just looking to finish the attic. I guess the reason, the real reason we're here is because before we bought that house, the existing barn was decided to remain, and that's kind of what, that plus the house that was built that we bought, put us over the RGA. So, um, this plan is very similar to what you saw four years ago, I think the bathroom moved from one side of the staircase to the other, because the plumbing was easier on that steering side, but it's virtually exactly the same. If the HVAC closet room as well, this bedroom, kind of a little bit smaller. There's no indications to the outside, except for the two windows that, the, the windows on the staircase we did, and nothing else has been done, so.
We went through all the site lighting and all that business when you were here before?
You did, because you gave it, you gave me a cut sheet on it.
Okay, okay.
All that's just a letter, these are just pictures of the house, and nothing. Barn, far side of the house. Um, but you can see the window that's installed, and that's the other window that was put in on the third floor. And then, one condition on getting the approval last time, is we changed our front lights, which we did, to these dark sky compliant ones, and those are the lights we put in. This is just our architect certifying that the blazing meets the requirements, square footage to blazing.
Yeah, that's, that's more of a.
That was a, um.
That's more of a building camp, yeah, that you have habitable rooms, so you can escape basically of ventilation.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so.
Escape windows are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Energy.
So, um, that's basically it, is there any questions?
I know.
No.
We already have a decision on this, so.
Yeah.
What we're doing is just updating.
Yeah, I didn't know that we were supposed to record it in the registry of deeds, and so, I bet that was our mistake, and so much time has passed, that.
Right.
We just needed to do this again.
When were you here, the first time?
May 20th, 2014.
Oh, good.
I have the old letter, yeah.
That is almost four years. Um, yeah, so what we need to do is, is make a decision on the revision to the date, is that, is that what we're doing?
Basically, yes, I mean, if you wanna hold all the previous conditions to it, and, you know, we're satisfied with it, I mean, it's, the site hasn't changed, you know, there's, there's nothing new to entertain there, it's, so. If the old conditions were working for that site, I don't see any reason why they would have continued here.
Did this push it over the square footage in the RGA?
Yeah, that's, I think that was the reason we saw it the first place.
Did we require, put in additional landscaping, or?
No, the lights were made all the time apart.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I think we just.
The outside did change.
So I think we put a new date on it, re-vote it, and that's it.
Okay.
With this plan.
With this plan, yeah, we'll, we'll update the references. Okay.
Do you want us to move that?
Well, we have to actually.
You don't have it in your hands?
Actually see the decision with that plan attached, and then we're good. So, again, when would we do that, you might?
We can do this on the 23rd as well.
Okay. So we'll make the decision on the 23rd, no testimony, it's just gonna be, we're reviewing the decision, voting on it, and that's it.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, I know I have Article 20 up here first, but can we do 104 Oak first?
Sure.
So we have people here for it.
Sure.
You're giving us anything?
Oh.
There is, um, we just made a couple of handful of editing changes since the version that was emailed, and just one substantive change, which was shared already with the applicant, and their attorney. We had dropped reference to Norway spruces that were discussed last time from one of Regis, and it's added back here, so the applicant and their attorney have seen these changes, and I printed this up in such a way that you can see what changes.
You okay with the changes?
Yeah.
It's quite historic.
It's worth it.
How am I reading it today? What was amendment number one?
I remember one of those.
First tree.
First tree. It's crazy.
I'm grading you.
How many of yours are up?
Oh, the original permit? The original permit was like 25 feet.
So, um, just to clarify on the discussion of the Norway spruces, these, this line of nine trees, this curving line in the back, was originally approved as hamlocks. And Kim pointed out at, at the last meeting, that second thought to hamlocks probably would not fare well, and instead, there was the discussion of Norway spruce and the Western cedar, Western red cedar. So now, of this line of nine large trees, these two, the blue ones, where their location had to be shipped back because of the new septic field, these two will be the Western red cedar. The rest in this line, the other six, will be Norway spruce, a mix of 22 to 24 feet, I think it is, and 12 to 14. And then there are another four Norway spruce. And then there are another four Norway spruce, and this is why it gets confusing, that are now proposed in red here on the Gale Road side to increase, uh, the screening there.
Right.
As mitigation for, there were two pines right here that had to be removed. So.
And I don't think any of that's clear in this.
Yeah.
Like, I, I would. So, like, on the, on the second paragraph, on the second page, where you said applicant representative, they were minimal to planning, Norway spruce and western red cedar, you're talking about that line of nine, in that sentence?
Well, it was in place of the hemlocks, so it was in the rear border.
Right.
In place of the hemlocks, well, they also initially proposed hemlocks here as well on the Gale Road. Yeah.
So, but, is that what you're talking about in the second paragraph, the nine at the back? Or are you talking about?
Hemlocks, uh, basically a general on the property, so, but we could clarify that it would be those nine in the back.
Because I, you, because I was gonna say, you're planting seven Norway spruce and two western red cedar, but then where are those four Norway spruce in this?
Well, can I just? Do we have a, a, a document that shows exactly what needs to be planted now?
When you say document.
Is that it?
If that, like, yeah, if that part list.
Is that, is that drawing correct?
Yes.
Could we just say, instead of trying to describe it all verbally, and just say, the planning shall be as indicated on, so middle drawing, whatever it is, the end.
Right, she does reference that, and has provided an updated landscape plan, maybe put the number right, something real bad.
Yeah, you don't have to describe them all verbally, because they're right there in the drawing.
Okay, but then that's.
Interpretation.
But then that very last bullet, which is what, talking to me, where they're talking about three Norway spruce, planted at nine feet high, um, how do they know which ones are those, are those indicated on the plan, those three?
That'd be a tree schedule.
Of which tree?
They're supposed to be, but they're not specified, because those three are going to be, uh, located with the butter, and Kim.
With Kim.
To maximize the screening for the butter, and then the other six in that prominent line would be.
Right, I remember that was an original condition.
Yeah, okay.
And one of the things that's so difficult is the layers of approval and mitigation that are going on here, so, uh, these four trees on the Gale Road side have consistently been called out in this application, because this is new mitigation beyond what was approved last year as mitigation. But I, I acknowledge that it's, it's very confusing, and sometimes it might be better to just batch it all instead of trying to.
Yeah.
Can we try, go through the history, just say, this is the end result.
Right.
And, you know, and that's it.
And I think basically, those two items in bold, the bottom of the page, two, that's, that's the end results. You're referring to the site for him, and what site for him, you're talking about the four hemlocks, and the nine.
So on the, um, bullet number two, then, or item number two, instead of trying to describe that, just refer to the revised landscape plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Everything is gonna be in accordance with the revised landscape plan.
The charity says for the revised landscape.
But make sure, know which one is the revised landscape plan, the best and final, final revised landscape plan as of this date, yeah.
But she's got it already listed, so all you gotta do is, is, is by reference, don't you? Dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Right, okay.
Otherwise, those, AKA, the landscape plan.
Um, yeah, we actually have, this version came in today, we're still cleaning up the, the matching between the plans.
Yeah.
Do we have to vote on this?
Uh, yeah.
I move that we approve the certificate of action amendment for, one oh four oak.
Second.
Yes.
As.
As modified?
As modified, yeah, because we.
That wasn't just modified, okay, sure, as modified. One second, again.
Second, again.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so. Can they just run, run the final version by the, you know?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's, should we do Glid Road? Let's do Glid Road.
On to Glid Road?
Yeah.
Okay. This one's on the other page.
What's next? Go.
I'm moving this COA site plan approval amendment four, 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 one, Glid Road, as corrected.
Oh, something that corrected?
Yes, something that corrected.
Canalogue.
Something that corrected.
Canalogue.
Second.
With the spelling?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't pick that up either.
Really, you're a tick.
Okay, uh, do you wanna do Article twenty now, or do you wanna do what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did somebody have the site number four, three, twenty-six?
No, not yet, I haven't finished it, I did, and I haven't finished the, uh, dates too.
Oh, okay. Another one, under the. So what's this?
This is a report, report to the moderator.
Okay.
Is this getting that out?
No.
No.
It's just a formality.
Yeah, we just, we have to get it to.
Nice summation.
Nice job.
Very nice job. So we have to do it?
Yeah, we have to go on.
Oh, all righty.
The citizens of Osterkirk, yes? That's Steve. What was that?
Citizens.
We missed it, Osterkirk.
Oh, you know, he's making marks there, you know what I mean?
Oh, yes, we, we're missing it, Osterkirk.
Good on you.
I saw it on.
Because you saw the.
That's, yes, very good. See, excellent. It's just like a comma, it's just like a comma. No, it's just in a different place.
All right, oh, oh, so I move that we approve the memorandum dated May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, to the town moderator regarding, um, Article, more than Article twenty, but you can see through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes?
Minutes, so Steve did three fourteen.
Woo-hoo.
Move that we approve.
I move that we approve. Minutes from three fourteen.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody did three twenty-six?
No, Steve twenty-six isn't done yet.
All right, okay. Final report?
I'm final report. Is there anything? There is one, um, I just wanna go over basically the schedule upcoming, since we're two, two weeks out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or three weeks out, actually. So, yeah, so, first thing is, we do have, um, May twenty-third is, that is our next meeting, two site visits in between fifteenth, we're at two fifty-three Meadow Brook for their fence, um, yeah, two fifty-three Meadow Brook is, is the one around state.
Oh, yes.
They've been building for a while, they want a fence that is, um, seven feet, and if you had, they moved it. Yeah, May twenty-second, um, pending next week, I'll have an intake meeting with Liberty Mutual, I'm planning on having that for May twenty-second.
What do they wanna do?
Um, that is expanding the parking that they have, that's the trade they've worked out with Mass DMT for taking away the rent, so, Mass DMT is giving them some land, they wanna expand their parking in their headcount. That will eventually have to go for a best special permit, so that'll be on the twenty-second, then twenty-third is our meeting again. And the other thing I just wanted to show you folks is, we went on to, uh, thirteen Pigeon Hill, we'll be seeing this soon, and, uh, one of the items that, um, Kim and I looked at this tree, this is rubbing, this is rubbing the power wires, it has burn marks on it, so, Kim felt we should just, before we look at the rest of the things they have to do, we should just approve this one administratively.
Is that the house where you put up the fence all around?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So it's fine.
Okay, and then, that is it.
All right.
Any progress on the water stuff, the construction?
The water stuff, I have been following up with, um, uh, with, uh, MWRC, and we had a meeting just last week, I talked to Karen about it, they are running out of, um, district local technical assistance funding for this year, which is why we sent in that letter to, to the State House to try and make sure it's funded for next year, so that we get in that, in that queue.
Very good.
So, um, garbials, uh, garbials, they have actually submitted details, they have made site visits, so.
Those, they.
Niche engineering, niche engineering.
Right.
Are they actually going to construct some of this stuff?
I believe so, yes, I believe they're, that's, that's the goal, so, garbials are moving.
Good.
That's excellent.
Do we have a meeting on June twentieth?
Yes.
Okay, and then, have we started thinking about July?
So July would be the eleventh, because the first Wednesday is the fourth.
Fourth, okay.
And then, then the question comes, are, is, are we having any meetings after that, right now, I, someone will come in who, who would wanna meet, second meeting in July, but right now, I don't have anything that needs to be, um, set up for those dates. I was trying to phrase that in some kind of sports metaphor, but I couldn't.
So the July fourth gets moved to the eleventh.
To the eleventh.
And then, so, eighteen get moved to the.
Well, that's the thing, we, right now, we don't have any, or are we even meeting on those dates, do you, do we wanna meet?
Well, it's just August we only meet.
No, in the old days, we used to not meet in July.
Well, there's.
Oh, really?
If there's nothing on.
If there's no agenda.
You can show.
Something will come up, it always does.
Something, I'm, I'm sure something will come up, I'm sure somebody will wanna come in, you know? There's a good possibility Liberty Mutual takes a few rounds, you know, so, it was, so, yeah, in that case, we would.
We're also gonna, yeah, we're gonna be back anyway, uh, in a harness on foster properties, probably.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, okay, yeah, so we'll do, we'll do July twenty-fifth as the, as the second meeting.
Any update on one oh four? Osterkirk?
No, I don't, I don't know what's going on with one oh four. Well, it's denied, they were still.
Well, they're appealing, right?
They're appealing, yeah.
Well, they have a scheduled date, or?
Don't know.
So it's gonna, how it doesn't feel for it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, and I know it's, it's there, but, yeah, I don't know what's, I don't know anything else, I saw, um, I had a copy of the, the motion the town filed to dismiss.
Oh, like a summary judgment kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay, how we doing?
This side is pretty good.
Moved to adjourn, somebody?
So moved. Second.
Okay, okay.